I will call this work session Monday, March 17th to order. Let's see, first is new employee welcome. I think we will go around and we'll start with introductions to give you guys a little bit of lay the line. My name is Courtney Johnson, I'm Mayor Carver.
I'm Kristi Moss, I'm the City Council Member.
I'm the City Council Member.
Eric Fersham, Council Member.
Kaila Pascoe, Council Member.
Right, we've met.
I'm Andrew Simmons, the new Director of Public Services and Engineering. Very excited to be here.
Jordan Walke, Utility Superintendent.
Vicky and we've met?
Yeah.
Yep.
Also, yeah.
And we have some Packer fans.
That might have been one of his things.
Go.
Oh, we don't want to do that, though.
Do what?
Talk about Packers more than we have.
I could be a truth on a word.
Wow. Okay.
You knew that was coming.
Well, in an effort to make this not so awkward, two truths and a lie a couple of years ago. So if you guys want to have added or if you want to introduce yourselves, like, whatever your preferences, we're pretty easy.
Two truths and a lie.
Awesome, let's go.
So two young kids, still play hockey, driven a Ferrari.
Driven, just like once?
Once.
All right. Okay, so we're going to raise finger of what we think is the lie.
All right, it is, do I tell it now?
Yeah.
It is three.
Okay, you've not driven a Ferrari. All right, how old are your kids?
Three and one.
Very odd.
Just turned one on Friday.
Awesome, very fun.
Congratulations.
Kenny's Mr. Momma this week.
I am.
Oh, my goodness, are they in the car?
Lovely grandma's grab a candle.
Crack the window for them.
Yeah, it's warm out today, it's super. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
We're happy to have you here.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
Okay, yeah, so my first one is I signed up for my college major by getting in the wrong line. My grad school research required a machete and snake chaps, and I have two hole in ones in golf.
Oh.
Mmm.
What was the first one? He got, he picked his major by being in the wrong line.
I don't know what snake chaps are.
They all sound bad.
That's not the lie because I'm excited you're there.
Apparently I don't look like a good golfer, but yeah, I don't have two. I don't even have one.
Okay, can you explain one and two?
One, I was, I went to undergrad at Winona State University and I wanted to do environmental science in biology. And they said, okay, all the environmental science people get over here. Turned out it was environmental science, geology, and I was like, this is cool. I did that.
How far until you realized you had gotten in the wrong?
It was like after like the orientation stuff.
After the first semester.
Junior year.
I seem to be talking a lot about rocks. No, it was good.
All right.
And then in grad school, I did a lot of research in the Soto National Forest in Mississippi, which there are lots of snakes and is very heavily wooded. And being from Minnesota, I don't really care for snakes, so I worked some chaps and machete just in case.
Wise choice, yeah.
Wow. Okay.
Today is Andrew's very first day, so.
Welcome. Thank you for pulling a really long day today. Who's the Packers fan?
Me.
Oh, you guys both could raise your hands.
I find it.
Okay, sorry, where'd you grow up?
I grew up in Hutchinson, Minnesota, so not too far from here, but.
Not a Packers hotbed community.
No, it's not, but me and my dad really liked to watch sports and I think when I was about five, I really wanted to get under his skin. Thirty years later, still, we still can't watch many games in the same room.
Outstanding, well, I appreciate how they return the balance. You're still holding number. Packers made the blind on, I know. Well, welcome, gentlemen, we are very excited to have you guys, very excited and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're on week, is it four now?
Three.
Three?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
No longer the new guy.
Thank you, Andrew.
Outstanding. We're going to go into the rest of the meeting, if you guys want to stay and listen to exciting things about like dog park rules, you're welcome to.
Otherwise.
They were bow out tonight.
Welcome to.
Thank you for staying.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, we'll see you next time.
See you next time.
See you.
All right, see you manager's report.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Couple of things, excuse me, a couple of things to update you on, so we talked about this at a previous work session, but this might be a little bit of a faster timeline. United Properties is really working on getting their tax increment financing application in, and so April 7th, you wouldn't have to take action, but what we would be doing is establishing a public hearing. So unsure at the moment if they're going to be able to hit that deadline, but this involves the development of their two commercial properties, funding that signal light on Levi Griffin and Commerce Drive. A lot of details, we'll have Northland Securities involved here, Aaron Smith and Schmidt have been working on the engineering and planning side along with Lynn and Northland Securities. Second one, strategic plan preparation, so all the department heads are working on environmental scans to present at your April 7th meeting. If you remember at our last, during our last process, rather than doing that during the session and taking up all that time, our strategy there was to have the environmental scans of kind of an overview of the department, you know, short term issues, long term issues. Have that sit with the council for a couple of days, so you had some time to think about that and participate fully in that. Next piece, this is the Wednesday, April 9th, Strategic Plan and Goal Setting Session, so that'll be in the council chamber starting at six, facilitated by Phil Kern, so I'll have the team here for that. We have the results, or draft results, excuse me, of the 2024 audit, so that is, what is that?
Close captioning.
There we go. So we'll have that at your April 21st meeting, I do want to.
It's okay, we can have it on there.
Yeah.
It's fine. There we go.
Skip ahead here, so this is a draft, so Lynn and I are still reviewing at goals findings, but I do want to pay or point out, so one of the things that the council has talked about during the last budget session for 2025 is the general fund reserve. And so by policy and then just by best practice, comes up during our bond ratings, we have in our policy to keep our reserve of 40% of our general fund expenditures for the following year. And so as you can see, we dipped below that in 2023 primarily just by undershooting or overshooting of building permit revenue. And that, as you know, throughout history, has been kind of a tough one to manage. There are, it's called Housing First, is out there as a kind of advocacy group wanting to make sure that cities don't make money as a source of profit off of their building permits. And so we've been trying to measure that in a somewhat conservative way because if we under budget on the revenue side, it'll appear that we are profiting even though that we have expenses. And so we've kind of done back and forth on that, kind of leaning towards being more conservative and making sure that we have ample justification for our fee structure. As you can see, we made up a lot of ground in 2024 primarily just due to vacancy savings from the Public Services Director and then unfilled shifts through the Sheriff's Office. There is some miscellaneous items, but all in all, the majority of that came from those two buckets. And that'll come into play here when I talk about this transfer resolution that we want to bring before you at your next meeting. So Fire Station Public Services tour, just wanted to remind you that we're planning to do that, the, well, touring the JCP building on Public Services and then the downtown building in Lions Park, as well as looking at the remodeled sections of the fire station, that the internal stuff they're already using as far as the turnout gears, locker room. The other two rooms are working on getting the equipment in there for the SCBA's and turnout gear washing stations, et cetera. Want to point out too, the Fire Department participated in an auction, this vehicle to the right is a former command vehicle from the city of La Conia. So they let us know that that was going to go for auction, so we sent a team out there last week and were successful bidders. It was just over $12,000 for this command vehicle. We're going to collect somewhere in the neighborhood of $28,000 for the command vehicle that was totaled in that recent accident. So there's a little bit of work that we'll have to do to logo it, but it is set up as a command vehicle, so the costs will be relatively low compared to the cost that we would have had if we would have spotted a regular command vehicle. So I'm going to move on to this bond closeout and transfer resolution discussion. So I've explained the, so this is a fund from the 2015 refunding and the primarily, primary sources for what I call the surplus or excesses related to, we get a bond schedule whenever we take out a bond and it kind of specifies or prescribes the amount that we need to levy. So we're required to levy 105% of the costs. And so that, along with the interest accrued on that, along with, the city does plan for a 2% interest rate on top of like special assessments to cover our costs for legal, bond reading calls, et cetera. So that accumulated to 337,000. I did ask Lynn to work with Northland on an exercise, there's one other fund that could be in this category. You know, we certainly don't want to be in deficit, but we want to identify and be a little bit more strategic if we have opportunities to lower our levy on debt service, if we can be that as it may. We do have this transfer, so we're looking to get this done before the 2024 audit presentation in April. So what we're giving you as a scenario, and this is 100% at council discretion, but we believe the first priority is to transfer approximately $80,000 to get our general fund balance up to 40,000, or excuse me, up to 40%, so that would satisfy our fund balance policy and look good to rating agencies if we went out for additional debt. The second piece is more of a strategy. So as you remember, we switched, or were forced to switch, construction methods on the Third Street Bridge project. And so both by cost and by engineering, by Braun and Bolton and Make, we took on some significant additional costs and we're going to be making a pitch to MnDOT and their bridge bond program to reimburse us for a majority of those costs. But they are located at us as a special case in that they funded us at a small cities formula, so under 5,000, which is a greater cost share than it would have been if we were funded at the over $5,000 mark. So we've been advocating, I've connected with the program administrators at MnDOT. That said, even with another $50,000 that we had planned for the 2026 budget, we could need in that neighborhood of 235,000. And so a strategy is to use this funds transfer to kind of zero that balance out as a worst case scenario. Another option, you could say we'll pay this through future levies, so you could do an interfund loan from water or sanitary sewer and say, we're going to pay $75,000 over the next X amount of years, or whatever the amortization schedule is that you'd want to use. But at the end of the day, we do have to fill that budget gap. And then finally, with the remaining funds, as I reported at the last work session, Aaron Schmidt and his team identified a Carver Bluffs Parkway as needing a full depth reclamation, so that's taking up all the pavement and then integrating it with the gravel base rather than just doing the mill and overlay. And so we're including that as kind of the prime bid for the 2025 street maintenance project, and then going to be included each of the other three streets as bid alternates. So if we get good bids using our existing funds, we can fund some of those alternates, but then this additional 22,685 could assist with that. And if we got good news from MnDOT on the bridge bond program, you would have the opportunity to transfer, if you made this, transfer, transfer those funds out of the Third Street Bridge project and back over to street maintenance, or greatly any other fund, you could transfer it to capital equipment or any other special project that you're thinking of. But we do want to close the fund, and this is a way that we think could check a lot of boxes for financial challenges that we would be having in the short term. So happy to answer any questions or consider other strategies that you think would be more beneficial to the city.
Questions? When do we expect to get final word from MnDOT?
Aaron?
So I've been communicating with them and ideally, they don't want to do any sort of a contract amendment until the final construction cost is determined.
Determined, yeah.
Because they don't want to do multiple amendments, so it would probably be like in June before we would have a definitive answer of what that would be, so.
And what's the cost difference on the mill and overlay versus the full depth reclamation on Carver Bluffs Parkway, more or less?
That one was probably about 120, I'll call it.
This total difference, okay.
Yeah.
I don't have any questions, I think of a logical way to distribute the money. It saves us from having to go and ask to do a levy in the future. If we're lucky and we do get MnDOT on our side, then we, then we're in the enviable position of what to do with that cash. But right now, I think we need to prepare to spend it.
Lauren?
I do have a question, on the previous slide, so I understand the 40% or that far right column percentage total fund balances to budget. The 40% is what we want to hit?
Correct, the column to the, that's total of like all funds, we want to hit the, we want to be in that unrestricted as the critical number. So second from the far right versus.
We want the black to meet the orange.
Correct.
So that in 2023, when we're at 29%, in addition to affecting like bond ratings, what else do we, what's the downside to it or what else, are there other risks?
I mean, from a economy perspective, you just have that, you don't have as much money to cover. Like, the primary goal of it is to have money for an emergency, and so they want to make sure that you have 40% of, like your, 40% unrestricted that you can apply to some situation. There are different kind of rules related to the enterprise funds related to operations and debt service, but part of it is, I would say, a paper exercise that the auditors want it, the state wants it. It's a demonstration of good stewardship of public finances, practical pieces, it's a, it's a rating piece where you could get less of a favorable interest rate, but there is a lot of like, I would say, like this good policy form, you know, we have a policy that was adopted by the council that we would be following. And so like, for example, when we did our rating call for our last issuance and they asked about the 29%, I did mention the vacancy savings that we were anticipating. I mentioned for the social sheriff and Public Services Director, I also mentioned how the city council reduced the revenues for the 2025 budget for building inspection fees, noting that we wanted to be more conservative. And so all those pieces helped with our outlook. But long term, like there's, you know, this was probably over 15 years ago, there was a city out west that on a consistent basis wasn't able to meet their fund balance, and so the state auditor's office came out and got involved. And so as a general rule of thumb, you want to be able to hit that. The city did move from 50% to 40% maybe half a dozen years ago. But there isn't, I wouldn't say there is any like, aside from I've already mentioned, like another thing bad that's going to happen. It's just more like, what do you have in your saving account type of thing.
Well, thank you for answering that. I don't have anything. Can you go back to the other side? I, I think that this is a good idea, I have no issues with it. I know that we're going to fight like hell to try to get the money from the state for that bridge fund. And I think, like, we put in for this when we were truly under 5,000, they just didn't have any money in those funds. So I think that we're, like, oh, that we're not asking anybody for any special situation. So I think that hopefully we'll get that, but I do think that it, I think I probably said this before, I'm not a gambler, so I think it makes sense to have that money in that account just for the worst case scenario. My question for you is, would we still have to do the 50,000 from the 2026 budget then if we put 235?
Yes.
Okay.
So the total gap is 285.
Okay.
So my, our strategy without connecting with Lynn, but you know, the first 50,000, we would work to try to reduce that as a liability for your 26 budget to provide you some more flexibility and use these funds that are being transferred. And then after that, you know, we'd come back to you with, you know, so if, say, we got, you know, 100,000, we'd say, okay, well, we'd come back to you and say, okay, we're going to take $50,000 out of the 2026 planning documents, what do you want to do with this other 50? Do you want to put it towards streets, do you want to put it towards capital equipment? We would offer that, you know, anything that you do should be like a one-time funding thing, so you don't have perpetual budget maintenance to keep something going.
Shoot, I have one question, oh, and we should hear back from the state by September?
Oh, June or September.
I thought we're putting it in June.
All right. Well, my anticipation is that the construction, well, the final construction cost is June, so then we'll be able to get a final determination from them.
Okay.
And we don't, we don't need to like wait till we have like every last cost buttoned up. And we have a pretty good general idea right now, so.
Okay.
Because we'll, I would like this officially be in a position where you have some, you've heard back from the state before you take action on the 2025 street maintenance project, because that will determine really how much funds you have to be able to use in those alternates, because we're in a position on some of these side streets and the Carver Bluffs that are as alternates that they'll more than likely transition from a mill and overlay to a full depth reclamation, which is what, 40 to 50% more in cost? And so if we can save that from happening, you know, we'd be the better for it. We just, we don't have any identifiable source of funds other than maybe doing an interfund loan, and we don't think it beats that criteria. What our plan is for the street maintenance fund is to, with Andrew joining the team now, is have Andrew and Aaron and Paul meet and, you know, redevelop the plan with some of these new scenarios and make sure that we're identifying some of these. We talked about, we have this 10-year plan, but then focusing on a three-year lookout and making sure that we're trying to avoid situations where streets are so close that from your, your vacant block from the mill and overlay to a reclamation. And if we identify that, maybe there's another opportunity to be another level of strategic on our plans. I mean, we went from no plan to five years to 10 years, and now we're kind of finding some of these like blind spots in the plan. And so that's one of the to-dos for this year's update.
All right, I don't hear anybody pushing back on this scenario.
No, I think it's a good, solid plan.
Okay, you have a change, can I say that?
And then finally, I put a copy of the printed materials, so we're being a little bit deliberate. We wouldn't usually bring this kind of level of detail to the council, but I would offer that, you know, next to the levy project, or actually more than levy project, this would be at some point in the future, the biggest, you know, public investment in the city's history. And so, and granted, I would say we haven't had any comments today, then I'm speculating, I could be wrong, but like, the majority of the comments the city is going to get is probably at this phase where you're talking about space. It's going to be, once the council has kind of dipped its toe in the water, if you will, on like a build year and a cost, and we can really get into like the detail of the site and having a debate about a specific thing at a specific point in time. We haven't had a lot of success, and even in my career, except when it's like this abstract of looking at space, but we do want to make sure that these materials build the foundation for an investment like that. And so I want to kind of double, triple check that what we're building that foundation on is something that you support, so that when you're out in the community, like what these materials are out there, we're at this step in the process. There are obviously many more steps, but this is the part where we talk about space and need. So I just wanted to make sure that this is what you were looking for, that the goal of it is not to provide every answer to every question that anybody might have, but give them enough that if they're interested, they can find out more, but not little enough where they wouldn't read it and not know really anything about the project, because there are some graphs that we like had where it just was just basically an advertisement to go to the website. And so this is hopefully a little bit of that mix where it's not like a full page report. It's something that someone can read pretty easily and get the basics and use that as a kind of a tee up for a conversation, either with somebody here, a council, a neighbor, engaging us on our website, coming to the listening session, et cetera.
I have a question for you, right on the back of the one pager, if you look on the back, and I know it's doubled into the, on that one. But so when it says zero existing need, is zero where we're at right now?
Correct.
Okay, so is.
That would be to fill like the gap, that's not like what we have, but in order to get everything that we have in one space is the existing need.
Okay. Okay, so, okay, I'm a little bit confused by this, so maybe this is something we should, so it says zero here, so zero. That's existing need, so that's what we need to add on right now.
Yeah, so I could make that like today's need.
Yeah, something that explains a little bit better.
Hey, just while you're in that box, can you, just in the PowerPoint, put that text box behind this image? Because it looks like there's a chunk bitten out of the building there, and I don't. And I don't think that's a case in the drawings.
Or just make it a transparent text box.
Oh, I see. I didn't notice that. Yeah, yeah.
Do we need to include 2025 probable costs?
It's up to you.
Because we're not, we're not going to get this project started. This is fifty percent completion in 2025.
The reason I put it in there is because I think it establishes a baseline of like what it costs today so that people can see the trajectory. But again, that's just one point of view.
Yeah, I was, yeah, I see the same thing, but I think exactly what Brent said, maybe having that baseline to say, here's today's cost, so every year that we wait, it's going to jump. It's going to jump. Can we explain then what we mean by probable 2027? Because the way that it's written, if you haven't been sitting in on our meetings, it doesn't, it's not clear that that's what we're talking about because if you just see probable 2025, they're like, well, if we start the project today, this is what it will cost. And there's, we're not, whatever we do is not going to cost what probable 2025 is.
So if I just deleted probable and just said 2025 facility costs, is that?
I think you have to say something like if started. Some way to express that, I understand what you're saying.
Present day.
Present day.
Present day facility costs, and not even put it here.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'll make reciprocal changes to the online stuff so I don't feel like you need to bird dog it in both.
Please, I always try to take it through the lines of like, what would my neighbors?
I know, that's what I was, I was looking at that. I was like, it makes sense. Brent, I was, that zero up on top of what I was there, I can't remember exactly how you said you were going to work it, but do we want to say? Yeah, but do we want to put like parentheses, like it's beyond, like, or it's beyond what we have now? So this is in addition to?
You know, whatever it is, fifteen thousand more than we currently have or?
Sure.
Whatever, just reiterate what's on the front page.
Just kind of show my man.
Yeah. And this is super nitpicky, but instead of the colons, do we want to say on that zero, twenty, thirty, fifty box, twenty equals twenty your need, thirty equals thirty your need? Just to demonstrate.
I mean.
Sorry to see that.
Yeah, I think that that makes it more readable.
So the, this is going to go up in the April and May newsletters. This will be posted to Facebook and Instagram and then linked on our website.
I think this is good. I think you did a good job of mentioning that it doesn't include land costs and all that, infrastructure fees. And then just to think the probable costs help define, we're working with some really squishy numbers right now.
Also, super nitpicky, you have a random dash on thirty here.
Yeah, there's thirty dash in there.
And then this will match whatever curvage you decide.
Are we good with that, yes?
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, oh, say expansion area. It's really hard to read.
I know.
What does it say? Expansion area? Do we want to put? Is that the word you want? Future needs area?
Future growth area?
Yeah. Future growth, but yeah, there's a better.
Be careful with future growth, sorry to. Future growth is like, kind of like what we talk about with Carver's future growth area in terms of like, where's there going to be more housing and industrial and that kind of thing? What if we, are you hung up on the term or just that you can't see it?
You can just add future to that, future site expansion.
Yeah, I think that will help. Future and darker.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Any council requests? I have a council request question. So last winter or fall, the skate park victory part was removed. Where are we at on a blank concrete pad that's looking at the park now?
We have no plans for that now. It was discussed a little bit during the 2025 budget process, but right now it's just, I would say TBD by the council. You know, if you want to see something there, we haven't gotten any feedback since kind of the initial stuff, but happy to consider that as a part of the twenty-six budget or the ten-year capital plan for parks.
So we have the Parks Advisory Committee. Is this something that we should get them together for?
I think that's a, a charge of their duty and then we can get some temperature of what the city might be looking for there.
I think before we do that, we would have to make sure that there's an appetite to spend money there because I think that that was our hangup when we discussed this previously. Recognizing that like another skate park is, I forget the numbers, but six figures seemed too far out of scope.
I think, I think if, if they do an exercise where they're looking at what could go there, but with costs attached, realizing if the Parks Advisory Board says, here's what the city is in want of, and the council agrees, then we look at, can we fund part of it? Can we, you know, because I don't know what that could look like, right? It could be a hundred different things that they come up with.
It's just, my concern is always like, you guys get to choose. And then it's like, well, that was a hundred thousand dollars that we don't have. The answer was no. So like, I don't want to put them through the exercise of saying, coming up with something and then us ultimately kicking it, say no or kicking it down the road.
I, I guess, in my opinion, I would rather have them do some type of exercise to get some community input, knowing that we're going to attach this, here's some costs. And I don't know that I want them, I mean, we're not going to go into depth of a big design. There's an area, let's do some ideas around it, get some costs, they report back, Erin reports back to us, and we say, okay, maybe we can do this piece 2026. Maybe they come up with an idea that we are unaware of, it isn't that expensive, but it just sits blank right now. So I'd rather have some input. And if it comes down to saying, thank, thank you for your time, we're glad that, you know, you could tell us what you're looking for and what the community right now is looking at, unfortunately, we can't pump it. Then also that shows that we did some due diligence to take a peek at it and consider it again. And if it's two hundred thousand dollars and we say, we just can't afford it, we can't afford it. But then we can say to the community too, we have looked at this, we have taken input and we, and we can't afford it right now. Or we can afford something.
I think there's more benefit to, to that ask and that pursuit than, than the worry that the funding isn't there today. Who knows what creative ask might come from that group?
And I know talking to the people around community park, they are concerned about what, if anything's going to happen with that because they feel that, you know, empty concrete just is another place for people to congregate with nothing to do. And so knowing that we've taken it into consideration is important.
I agree because I feel like it's programmed for like nothing. And I feel like usually we want something planned or used for, you don't fill in the blank.
Be roller skating, I'll come back.
There's folks that are out there that are using it, there are folks that are using it for like RC and skateboard, it's all regardless of it having amenities.
I was going to say RC park, but I wasn't sure that would fly.
But I'm bummed, get it? Yeah, that's how it's being used. All right, anything else, council requests? Don't bring Auntie Enclave.
Let's see what happens.
Want to see your bits?
Maybe.
No. Bummer. Okay, so tonight we were doing another project review similar to what we saw at the March third meeting for Summerfield and Summer Gate. So the project tonight that we're talking about is called the Enclave at Carver Creek. So again, there's no requests tonight, just a preview of an upcoming project. This one, again, is quite large, so there's a lot of details. Just want to give you some time to wrap your head around the size of the project, where it is, et cetera, start thinking about some feedback you might have at concept planner review for the developer. The project is proposed by D R Horton. They previously have had Meridian Fields and Hawthorne Ridge in the community. It's the London and Hammers property south of two twelve, and city utilities are available via several streets. So we've been planning for this development, utilities are available, they're sized appropriately for this project. So the project is outlined in yellow right now, so two properties, formerly the London family and the Hammers property. And then on the smaller photo, I've circled the area, the comprehensive plan for the area. So the two larger properties are guided for low-density, single-family, and the property adjacent to Highway two twelve is guided medium-density residential. So thinking through those, that density mix, a little bit higher density, closer to two twelve, lower density as you move south towards some of the other projects that we're working on right now, like Timber Creek. So the projects that lead into the project are, the north side is the Preserve, which is the Brandle Anderson product. So it's Tamarack Road and then Old Oak Road goes in, and then Timber Creek is the big tie-in with Balsam Drive, Timber Lane, and then Monroe Drive as our collector to take most of the traffic from this entire project to JCP.
Erin, just to get my bearings on this, so the little lake area, is that a man-made depression there or is that?
That's a good question. We are a little bit confused because in this area right here, we think it was probably part of the rail corridor at some point, that's what that little slices. So likely, I would say, is, if it isn't entirely man-made, it was person expanded.
Okay, because it's very perfectly round on one side. But then it stops at the property line, right, at the same soul?
Yeah.
Okay, so do we have any idea at like the depth or?
Not right now, but through the E A W process, the environmental assessment worksheet, we'll get some details about it.
No, maybe getting way ahead, you'll find out, just stay wait and move on. Is that, will that be considered part of like our retention pond system there then? So we won't have to have it in, or as many or as much in another place because that's already there?
We don't have the details quite yet, like we'll figure all that out in preliminary plating, but it does stay as it is. So if it can take additional water, it could.
Okay. Thanks.
So here is the concept plan that D R Horton has presented to us. Steph has gone back and forth on this project, probably two or three times with some changing of some details, like the version one had more cul-de-sacs than I think I've ever seen in a project. We added an additional connection into Timber Creek over to Monroe Drive. So Steph has seen this a couple of times, we've provided feedback a few times. So you'll see throughout the project, there's a mix of different lot types, lot sizes. So the light green are forty-five foot wide lots near two twelve, so a smaller house product on those lots. And then the purple and the orange are both sixty-five foot wide lots throughout the project. So there's one hundred and twenty-three of the forty-five foot lots, one hundred and seventy-eight of the sixty-five foot lots, and then a hundred and twenty-nine townhomes, which is up in this area here, bringing us to a grand total of five hundred and thirty total lots. So we can talk through some additional details. Something that we have worked on a lot with D R Horton is the park sighting for this project. So it's this area way down here. So a close view of it, so it's a hockey rink, two pickleball courts, half basketball court, places some in an active area. The thing that I think is really neat about this is this is that rustic trailing Timber Creek. So it'll come through the enclave and bring you right into this park area. So these lots are going to be probably pretty beautiful and then directly adjacent to a park, which I think is something that this area of town needs. So a park of this size, I think, would be exciting for existing residents and residents that would be coming into the enclave. So there are a lot of steps similar to Summerfield that this project needs to complete. The planning commission is going to see this concept plan on Thursday, March twentieth, so this Thursday, they'll get their first blush feedback to the developer. I know D R Horton is planning to be in the room so they can be part of the conversation, take feedback, questions, et cetera. You'll see this review at the April seventh city council meeting, your formal concept planner review. D R Horton will be here again, so if you have specific questions for them, that's your time to say, we love this, can you tell us more? How are things selling? What's the market like? Annexation needs to occur, so that is reviewed by the township and a resolution by the city council. Based on this project size, an environmental assessment worksheet is required. So thinking about the United Properties environmental assessment worksheet, it's the same list of questions, but applied to a residential project instead of industrial. And then plating and rezoning, so preliminary plat, rezoning and final plat, all will need to be completed. But we're starting the process, they're starting to draft their E A W. So moving forward with this, I anticipate we start to see some applications for annexation and then that E A W in the next couple of months. I'll back up here, if you have any questions, feedback, just want to give you another look at it because this one is also quite large, so.
So if there were no delays, when could they conceivably start tunnels on the ground?
Grading, probably spring of twenty-six. Does that feel right?
Yeah, I was hoping you weren't going to say fall of twenty-five.
That would be real.
Then it'd be phased.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Probably phased.
Where's that overpass that's supposed to be? We have an overpass out here.
Yeah, so we have been engaging with Carver County Highway on that and based on, well, based on our analysis, and I believe they concurred that we're not going to put that overpass in. Erin, you can fill in the blanks as needed, but when we took a look at this, based on the land use changes that we have up by Fleet Farm, we used to probably have like concentrated commercial, and it's become a little bit more of commercial industrial. That combination along with the recognition that an overpass really gets, would only help probably the center of this development, that folks that live west of that overpass would go to Jonathan Carver Parkway, folks, or excuse me, east would go to Jonathan Carver Parkway, west would go to forty-three. And the road, because of the ravine system, can't go any further south. So there's just a pocket of residential that would be, would be using that as kind of a shortcut to the commercial area by Fleet Farm. And even when we engaged the highway department, they shared that they recognize that the need would be thirty to forty years from now. And primarily as a reliever to some of the two twelve exits, may, you know, the right of some of those areas. And so we'd be, you could plan and take the right of way, but it would be a local road. So we started to look at the cost benefit and say, okay, who's going to pay for it? We, the city would have to fund this road or attempt to get into the county sales tax funding system that maybe help pay for it. And then, and I don't think we did an assessment, but we figured that a good chunk of these homes would be lost just by preserving right of way because that'd be a pretty major or self-collector running through there. So that, that's all happened within the last handful of days.
I just, that's too bad because when I think of the city of Victoria, they're so chopped in pieces in the city because of Highway five, because of Highway seven. So I would think it would have been nice to have something that would have.
Well, you can say that you want to put it in there.
Well. Where does it, does it lie behind this?
In, yeah.
So this is Fleet Farm here.
Yep.
And it would generally hit in the center of this project.
That's a mile away from eleven?
It'd be right in the middle between eleven and forty-three.
So I mean, it's certainly, I mean, literally, Erin talked to Darren.
This morning.
This morning.
Yeah.
So you could certainly say, you know what, even though we don't think the need is there today, we still want to preserve the right of way. You know, they, you know, we'd probably bring in Dave and talk about, you know, how they're preserving that right of way. You could dislink into Monroe Drive there, but though you'd be taking that, or you're not taking, but that, that initial, I don't know if it's a home site or farm site or whatever, but that property of basically, the majority of that would be right of way, and then the rest would be probably in that property.
Yeah, that would be the place that I see is, you'd have to use where that goes planted there, that would turn into a basically future overpass corridor. So I don't, I don't think in any scenario we're going to be doing any like actual infrastructure improvements as part of this.
You don't need to decide this tonight. I mean, we would document this in the staff report and if, like if it was something that the council said, you know, we want that, you know, we could certainly make provisions in the preliminary plat for a north south right of way to intersect with Monroe Drive, that maybe some of that geometry of. Maybe some of that geometry of Monroe changes a little bit, so it's squared up.
So we have another, once this, this development here ends, it's another mile to get to forty-three?
Above, yeah.
I mean, that's a long stretch without having, because we'll eventually be developing north of that because that Gaystock Lake is up there and all of that property. That's a long stretch to not have access back and forth across the highway.
But is that ghost plat enough? Real estate, do we need more than that for right of way?
I wouldn't think so. The, the one piece is, there's only so much physical area on the south side of two twelve because we're bound by the bluffs on the south side. So to Brent's point, it's really just this small area that's contributing to any sort of an overpass scenario, so that's why.
So you won't be able to cut through, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but then maybe just cut this short. Because where this farm site is up on the, where the farthest left little nook is, no, go farther, right there. So if we go down from there with the bluffs that start, so you can't get through there.
No.
So the only place you'd be coming through there would be on that, just above it.
Yeah, you can't get the dog in Monroe. So the corridor Monroe is gonna extend to forty-three.
On the north side of the bluffs.
But it won't be able to get, it won't be able to get down to Monroe at any point going west.
Even if we had more of a frontage, we could back down.
Yeah, we can't get, I mean.
It's all bluffs.
It's all bluff system.
No, well, there's a farmhouse right there, how is that a bluff?
Can you point to where you're?
Okay, Laurie, I'm sorry, I went holes. I need my, I need a laser pointer. Okay, so because we have all this development here, right? And if we had it coming up here, what, you know, we've got a frontage road that runs up here right now.
Monroe, yeah.
No, the actual frontage road that's up there.
That goes away.
Right, I know that. But when this comes down, I mean, we could have a piece of a frontage road that would came down like this, yes?
Monroe will eventually connect to forty-three, doing that kind of what you're talking about.
Doing this?
Yeah.
Like this?
Correct.
Okay. But we're only thinking right now because we only go this far of going east, right? These people may have reasons to cross and be west. We don't know what's gonna be north of two twelve later on.
Residential.
Oh, but that's where the residential starts? There's no industrial or commercial down that far?
Not west, not until you get to Coney Road forty-three.
It's out here.
It's kind of shown on Erin's map there in the red and orange.
This is, is this this piece right here?
Yeah. So the red and orange is forty-three.
Okay.
So yeah, there could be. I mean, again, it's like, I, I don't think you, but you or the council would be wrong to say, no, we want that overpass, it's just based on our kind of looking at, can this get down? Can this extend? It seemed like it was dead ending. And so for us, this kind of in a cocoon, that made sense to us. You can't get to Doggeren, so it's teeing off and go to Monroe or vice versa to Levi Griffin. And if, you know, it's hard to prognosticate thirty to forty years old, right? But you do have, like, if you don't preserve it, then you'll never have it. And if you do preserve it, you know, there's impacts today. So it's finding what you think is the right balance.
Yeah.
And we could do some additional analysis, you know, we can, you know, you flag this and say, hey, we wanna understand more about these areas, we can certainly do that for you.
What does preserve this mean right now in twenty twenty-five? Do we have to buy the land? Do we have to tell them that they can't develop it?
No, it means in the Timber Creek, not Timber Creek, but in this enclave, you get them to dedicate right of way. So that'd be like, I would say like the probably simplest piece. But eventually, and I don't know when the timing will be on this, Erin, but there'd be a conversation related to that property in order to the north that, you know, we'd have a right of way mapped out. I just, I think that conversation will be a more complex than I'm ready to talk about now because then it's like, oh, what's left of the property? So you might end up having to acquire more than just the right of way at some point. And then if they do come in for housing, like that will expedite the process.
Is there something that we can do internally? So I mean, I'm not asking the developer to redo this now, but that we can just overlay to see what if we had an overpass, how much space that might even take? Because it's kind of hard to.
We could do that as a part of the process.
Okay, then we could at least see it. Thank you. My next question is the Y.
The Y cul-de-sacs?
Yeah, the Y cul-de-sacs. Hmm, I don't care for that. Cul-de-sacs are more profitable. They also create more issues when it comes to snow plowing and maintenance. And weird, that corner lot, those two corners sticking in the backyard up next to their house backyard, it seems, it just seems an odd configuration. I'm not sure.
I would finish that thought, but I would interrupt the colleague. This hasn't been submitted as a concept yet, so you'll be, this may change by the time you look at it. We're just giving you a, we're not just, but we're giving you a preview tonight of like, this is on its way. But the configurations and the lots, the way you see them today, I, I would recommend not focusing in on that because this is, like Erin mentioned, this has changed three or four times, maybe in the last three or four months.
Okay, so my problem with the short cul-de-sacs is we've just come into this issue with parking and cluster mailboxes and where trails come in. And because they're, they're smaller, tighter cul-de-sacs, they're shorter, those front air lots get real skinny, right? So I know that we have retention ponds up here and I don't know if this is intentional, but is there any way to make that like more of a square? Have a cul-de-sac maybe come off the bottom part and create a square there? You know, it's hard to see where in.
Which cul-de-sac are you referring to?
Okay, Laurie. So if, I mean, maybe even if we kept this one, but this went away and this became more of a square and then retention ponds could be around it and then that alleviates, that alleviates one cul-de-sac here. Gives people kind of a nice view out there front of the, of over here. But whatever that could look like, maybe it's square would work okay here and then have just the one little shoot off of cul-de-sac rather than having.
Any other feedback, Laurie?
Oh, I do have one other thing, I've got a different slide. I would be more curious to know, it's, I'm wondering too if the different colors are different products, but also like what is the builder trying to accomplish? I realize this is so preliminary too. You know, whether it be a certain lot size or, you know.
It's the house type.
Okay, so it's the house type. Yeah, my, my bear concern is the flow of traffic and, you know, do we need an overpass?
Some of the things you'll see in like later like concept or preliminary, you'll see grading. So some of the lot configurations are based on grading and low areas, et cetera, where they can facilitate infrastructure more efficiently.
And this project is so fluffy. Like this is all part of the bluff system, so. Eric?
I'm super happy to see a developer wanting to put in five hundred and thirty lots. I think it is too early for us to be tearing this apart if, if we're at this very early stage. I like seeing some high density housing there as well. But I agree, I don't like the, the Y cul-de-sacs, but I, I expect this is gonna change a lot before we really start drilling down into it. So I'm not gonna worry about that.
I'd be curious to see the grading because I'm wondering how much of this odd configuration is due to topographical situations on the ground? I bet it all is.
Guess we need to go walk it for.
They're not getting created like that because I think it would be fun to have two.
Yeah, you could walk it, Eric. Okay, yeah.
Any other feedback, Eric?
No.
No, all right. You said you have one more thing.
I did have one more thing. If you go to the park, the page that showed the closure, thank you. Hockey rink back there and then by itself, it worries me a little bit. But if we're gonna have a hockey rink back there, if we have plans to have that lit, that needs to be lit from the moment that it's built, because if you don't light it right of way, it will never go in. Because any res, if you buy the house and you say there's lights there, I know there's lights there. If you try to put them in after the fact, you're up for a fight, you'll never win. If it becomes a hiker.
Is that a community?
City park.
A city park. How would we flood that like a well up there?
We haven't got that far.
But there will, there'll be city utilities there.
Okay.
If I remember correctly, I think they were just putting those things on there just to show space planning. I don't think we're saying it has to be out there.
But anything we do put, if we have light, if we're gonna have lights, we have lights from day one.
Like, for example, besides kind of the three of us, this hasn't been sent out for like department review and comment because it's a sole, I would call it a hog at this point.
I don't love that park kind of tucked away there. And I really have an issue with parking, there's no parking there and parking on the cul-de-sac is gonna be a stretch, so all of those homes are gonna, maybe homes that come out have park users parking in front of their homes. And if there's a hockey tournament there or if the P E sports ballers decide to do a practice there, that's gonna be easily fifty cars on that street. So I don't like not having a parking lot. All the parking lots are wasted space and they're vacant most of the time. I think we can't have a park without a parking lot.
I agree. Especially as tucked away as it is.
A full-fledged park. I know that we've got overlooked park and that does not have a parking lot, but that's not really programmed, so. I have a concern about that. I will say again, I said it with the Summer Gate, that I think this is our one time to have larger lots with five hundred homes in there. I would love to see even just like five acre plus lot sizes to have that variety in our community because we talk so much about a variety of housing choices and we're getting better at denser, more affordable options. But I think that high end, that other end of the spectrum is where we are missing. And I don't know, the developer will love to hear that, but I think this is our one chance when we are building hundreds of homes to get that in there. And I think that that in itself makes the arithmetic a little bit easier when we're trying to prevent density. My other question.
Did you say five acre plus?
Five, five, one acre.
Oh. I'm glad you don't trust.
And then we're gonna allow goats and horses.
And of course chickens. My only other thing is as we're looking at this, and this might be an Erin Schmidt thing, but I just remember all of the heartburn that we had on a dead end water system in, what would it have been, Timber Creek, Copper Hills, Copper Hills probably. And I don't know if it's possible when we're putting this together to kind of keep that in mind and to really minimize those dead ends. Especially like not knowing when the next phase of development might come. But I think that we've really noticed ever since there hasn't, that dead end was removed and the system cycles like it should, we haven't received as many complaints, so. I would love to be out of that business of fielding complaints about water.
Courtney, I just wanna say I one hundred percent agree with you about having some larger lot sizes. We talk about diversity of housing, that's not just the smaller and the more affordable. That runs the gamut, so I think that you are right on there with that. And I agree totally, we need to hit all spectrums of that.
And it's, it's not gonna work when we do a bird view that's twenty or twenty-two lots. And I think that this is our opportunity here to the north and then to the south as well.
Erin, does that come up in your conversation with developers? Is there an appetite for one acre lots in this area?
The tricky thing is that each builder has a series of houses that they build. I would say a one acre lot is likely a custom home, so it wouldn't necessarily be something that D R offers because they offer a range of each house. So it's, there's our, I won't even try to remember them right now. But in their scale of housing, they might not have a house that is complementing a one acre lot just because of the finishes, the style of the house that they produce at their top level. But granted, a top D R house right now is still probably seven to eight hundred thousand dollars. So just that balance of someone who might want a one acre lot, probably would want a custom build, and that's not something D R offers.
Well, let's ask them to offer it. When I was in the city of Victoria, we had, every development that was going at the time, we had a couple of custom lots that we required to go in or required or asked for, however it turned out. And we said, have this maybe custom lots? People loved it, they bought it up, they built the house they want on it. How do we make that happen? Let's not say no, let's say how do we make that happen?
Well, Erin's asked, I've been in meetings, I've got emails, I mean.
I have, but I don't. Definitely haven't asked, but how do we do it?
It's, you have minimums. They're not asking for any like public subsidies, so you can't make them. They, they have to build to the minimum, but we can't. I mean, it's a relationship thing, we can encourage and say the council wants it. But we, there's not a mechanism that I'm aware of on a zoning where you can just say, your lot has to be bigger, bigger than what your code requires. I don't disagree with you of this, that's, and I think they're, you know, when Erin mentioned it, the folks at D R, they, you know, wrote it down and said, we'll bring that back to our team. In the, in some cases, like, you know, on this specifically, they're not dealing with like, they're not buying it from somebody, so like, they make their money on the house.
They're not one broker in this development. But that, but that.
That's not a consideration that the city can make. I'm just saying that they make their money on the, on the more lots that they have, the more money that they make. And so, and I'm just kind of like paraphrasing stuff that I've heard from Dave Anderson is, if they're investing and they, they get the return on the lot and then they, the city kind of compels them or attempts to compel them to sell a larger lot to another party, that becomes a challenge. I don't, we can reach out to Victoria and see if they have a vehicle to do that.
And they could have gone by the wayside since I was there, but I, I mean, I just very well remember it, so.
Most of the time, at least in my experience, most of the times when those are curbs, I can develop that is like a view where it's.
Bring your own builder?
It's bring your own builder and it's oftentimes in like areas that aren't incorporated, that they're all in the city.
Like Hawks Point in Victoria is one, where it was like a Summer Gate that developed the lots and then they sold them off one by one instead of D R who's developing lots and then building the houses too. So it's a different group, so it would be just a developer that creates the lots and then chooses to sell them. Most people, the market right now is selling to nationals, so it's one, our faulty D R, the customs. There also are custom builders that do entire neighborhoods, like Waterford Landing and Victoria is a Charles Cud product and those are all custom homes. It's just a different level.
So is D R not, I mean, D R's gotta put in some development that's fancier than ours. They don't have anything that they can pull out of a plan to send to a builder to have them build something a little more?
I think we can give them that feedback and they can.
I'm just asking, I don't know where they build everywhere, so I mean, it's something they.
I would say like some of the houses in Hawthorne on some of those lots are probably the nicest setups that they get from D R.
But you know, in some, you know, kind of acre lot, I don't know if the house ends up being that much larger. It's just, if you have more land, it's that eight hundred thousand dollar house on an acre lot. So.
True.
But they wrote it down, they said that, you know, they have, they sell certain products in certain states. And some of the feedback they've given us before is like, that product hasn't been introduced in Minnesota. But they haven't gotten back to us on that Erin's initial question, so.
And I guess, yeah, a high-end home, you know, maybe somebody wants to build a four hundred square foot house on an acre lot, you know, like I don't know that we can control what is built on there, but I just think to have that option just feels like something that we're missing in our newer developments. And just with the numbers, I think that this is the easiest way to get them in.
And that might be right on too because I don't see a million dollar house going up here, right? So even if.
How much are their million dollars by the time they?
Maybe, yeah.
That's something you need to answer today, but like in most instances, like you can kind of horse trade. That's something you need to answer today, but like in most instances, like you can kind of horse trade, if you will, and say, okay, we want five one acre lots, but then are you willing to, you know, have reduced setbacks? You know, they're going to want, if they're going to give five acre, you know, because of, you know, you think three units an acre and you have five one acre lots, so you have five, five homes instead of 15, can you give them back that density somewhere else?
How did we get the house, a couple houses taken out of it? Bird view. Bird view, thanks.
Because that was a, that was a PRD.
And their, their density, even with the 22 from the 24, was still above three.
And what is this density at on this one?
No idea yet.
We have no idea.
Just for everyone's knowledge, DR Horton does sell million plus dollar houses in the Virginia, Maryland area. They are 5,200 square feet, so they do have a large, high-end product.
I would offer that probably, a big majority of that million dollar home is probably the land in Maryland.
It's still five, 5,000 square feet is a big house.
Yeah, but the, their products are three to 3,500 right now, so we'll have the conversation with them, tell them the council's interested, but I wouldn't be, you know, if you want to compel them, it's going to be done with honey nut vinegar on probably some lot requests in some other part of the development.
I'm okay with that.
And again, you'll see the full picture, you'll have to decide tonight, but...
Erin, am I incorrect in saying we've got a better shot at getting large lots at Summer Gate because it's going to be plotted, platted and then sold to builders, developed first and then sold to builders now?
No, I'd say it's about equal. And DR could get all of Summer Gate. They could...
That's true.
Okay, any other feedback on this? All right, want to start talking?
And we'll, I'll get this included in the public record because those are requests to the council, but I did forward an email from Mr. Eric Evans and regarding the dog park that was forwarded up to the council regarding this topic.
Okay, so obviously mid summer 2025, as I'm anticipating, we excited open, which is super exciting and somehow super soon. And we will have a dog park there, both for large dogs and small dogs. So finding it important to have some rules for the dog parks. I worked with Dr. Carissa from Healing Hands on putting these together. She gave me some really good feedback. I didn't invent these. It was a conglomeration of several dog park rules brought together that Dr. Carissa thought were helpful and important. Something to consider at the council level is if you want these rules to be enforceable, we'll need to pass an ordinance. So if you wanted to ticket someone for not cleaning up after their dog, we would have to have a corresponding ordinance that would be enforceable. Rules on their own are, it's a pure pressure, but we can't enforce them. We wouldn't be able to write tickets just based on signage. So I suspect you all have read them. I won't go one by one, but we can open up the conversation probably here and then if we need to another room too.
Do we not have an ordinance right now about cleaning up after your pet?
Not specifically for the dog park.
It would have to say, correct, in the dog park in addition to one that I assume we have that says on the street or wherever.
Nice reminder.
Just as, and Kristi knows this, but like we have signage for like, you know, no sauvetos, no gulfing in parks, but we don't have, it's not codified in the city ordinance. We also don't have anybody like out there. So like the only perspective I'd add to it here, Erin, is we don't plan to have any staff out here.
Right.
And so it was produced in conjunction with Erin's work with Dr. Carissa. Our current perspective is, is a pure pressure and kind of best practices. Because ultimately if issues like this occurred and you codify it, then you'd be looking, you'd be calling the sheriff's office and saying, you know, somebody was, had their dog taken a hole out there and they didn't fix it or whatever.
I think we should codify it because otherwise we'll be in the same place that we were with all the parking stuff where it's like common sense, but then frustrating to residents when we can't enforce it. Parking in front of mailboxes, parking for 13 days on the street without moving your car. I think the resident won't understand the rules versus ordinance portion of this. But, okay, knowing that we're a little, just tight on time for this section of our conversation, just from my thoughts, I thought that this was great. For number three, I would like to see us remove attempt to, so it says if your dog digs a hole, please fill it. You hate that?
No, 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 I'm sorry. On the next sentence.
Okay. It's the next sentence that he hates.
Well, I don't know how we enforce what kind of collar you use for a dog. I agree that might be best practice, but how does the city codify that?
Well, I don't necessarily think we... What are you in for? My dog had a spike collar on, you know, like I don't know that we...
I think we should remove that sentence.
Codify all of those?
Yeah, that's like the color of your leash. I don't...
Was the idea, but I bet Dr. Carissa was coming from a safety for other animals.
That makes sense, but I, I think that's going.
So my feedback on that one was I think that sentence could be reversed a little bit to say dogs must always have a collar on while using the dog park. No spike, prong or pinch collars, your dogs must be on a leash. So just kind of reversing the first and second sentences there.
Not always on.
Yes, sorry. We'll entry that, your dog must be on a leash. My point was more just the reverse order of those two sentences. That's my second piece of feedback. Number six, I think, pastor. And then do we want to add hours to this?
It would have park hours right now.
Okay, maybe it just needs to be said because, especially since we don't post like park hours when you drive in or whatever. I also looked at what Chaska did for their dog park. I really liked it because they said like, you know, like people, this is what you do. And then it was like dogs, this is what you do. So it's like dogs don't dig a hole. It was just like a fun spin on, you know, like how to write the rules.
Like the ones that you have that says for the coaches, volunteer coaches, your kid is not a professional. The coach volunteers.
But those are more like dogs, be nice to your friends, don't, you know, or don't come here if you're sick. Don't, you know, it was just, it was written to the dogs, which was kind of fun. Any other thoughts?
I would like to see weight restrictions between the small and large. Because we don't have that. I think I saw some that said 30, but maybe just take a peek around and see whatever is kind of most commonplace. When we are looking at, let's see, own risk, is that the, that's okay with the attorney? Just saying that you're using your own risk? If that's fine with him, I don't care. Where am I at here? Okay, so there's a line in this one that says dogs must be under the handler's control. Where am I looking at here? I like it. Let's see, try to get this right. Do we have something in there? Why am I not, it's not showing up? It must have been either three rivers or a quarter because I'm...
Yeah, I think I saw it on ours.
Okay. All right. I think that we have watch for signs of aggression. I think it should say something about aggression, you need to remove your dog, right? So if they were moving them from the park, you can watch from what you want, but that's not actionable, right?
Like your dog gets into a fight or starts showing signs of aggression?
I have an idea. Yeah, if the dog gets in a fight, signs of aggression, put your dog in the car, then go exchange contact information and leave. Remove the dog.
You're assuming everybody drives there.
All right, correct, but the thing is while your dog's fighting, don't be like, hi, this is my phone number. Here, here.
It's at the bottom of my privacy or something.
Immediately remove.
Yeah.
Dog showing signs of aggression.
Situation, you know?
My one about immunized, like if they have to have rabies, does that? I mean, a lot of dogs get different things. What does council think about just immunization? Does that work good enough? Rabies is required or something like that?
There's like parvo is another one too. She has a list of them.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch of them, but rabies is the one they put the dog down for if it bites.
Oh, sure.
So even if we just follow it with rabies is required, rabies vaccination is required? I don't want to be too long and wordy in these sentences. I think some of them are a hair long. We aren't going to read them.
What's wrong with the Carver County park rules? Those seem pretty succinct. So there's a link on this to go to the Carver County.
Not Three Rivers, the other one?
Not Three Rivers. Carver County has, I think, more of a menu to choose from here. So it says dogs must be properly licensed and vaccinated.
I have it up now.
All right.
I'm sorry, Kristi, I interrupted you.
No, that's fine.
It is very clear. Is there parts of this that Kristi hated?
No, and if this is what you want to do, that's totally fine. I think it probably works for them, otherwise they would change those.
I just, it's simpler language. It doesn't go in the, I think, excessive detail.
The only one I can say is we should put an age limit on children, if it's 12 and under or whatever, because children, it isn't very clear to me, but I like the way this, thank you for bringing this together, but I think that one's a little more succinct and it's just very short sentences and people are more apt to read it.
I like that one.
Great.
Let's do it.
I am, just addressing the email that we got from the resident. There was a suggestion of charging for this and requiring passes. I just want to remind that I have absolutely no appetite for that.
This has come up before and I agree, I have no appetite for that and the, how you regulate that.
Yeah, there's not a gate. There's not, we don't want to stay.
There's for the four dogs that come in December.
Ah, okay, great. Are we good?
So I'm hearing kind of park rules, but then you want it codified.
Plus adding an age limit?
Yep.
Well, we need to, the one thing here we need to do is also delineate between what's small and a large dog.
They do that in first line. They have 25. So we need to decide what our number is.
Use always small, yeah.
You can bring your small dog to the bigger ones, but you can't bring your safe regarding with a fish.
That makes sense, okay, right.
Do we codify all of it or none of it? Or can we pick and choose? Because I think it's like...
Well, we'd have to connect with Dave. I'm sure he has a template for me to do this, so we'd bring back it in Carver form and then whatever codification to another work session.
Okay, because I think it's important to make cleanup after your pet enforceable. I think it's important, there might not be anything else in there, you know, like...
Well, maybe if that's the one that feels important to you, there's a spot in our ordinance that we could say including in the Creekside Dog Park.
Well, it says all of the park rules and regulations enforced.
But those aren't...
So that would be like park hours.
But those are rules and rules aren't enforceable. It has to be...
Regulations are.
Right.
We'll come back with this in form. We'll have a, we get a draft of a sign made and we'll have Dave provide some insight on code, how it should be integrated.
Okay, sounds good. We are at time, so we will bump the strategic plan update to the regular meeting. Do you have any from us, Fiona?
No.
Okay.
Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by council member Freshman.
I'll second.
And a second by council member Sarah. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's all, same sign. Motion passes. Oh, he's here for ED.
Yes.